For the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the February 4th meeting. First, I would ask if there are any comments from the public regarding any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Okay, I'm hearing none. Ask for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Second, all in favor? All right, motion carries. And then a motion to adopt the consent agenda for personnel, item six, item seven, special services, and then eight, business.
Second.
All in favor? All right. And just with that, just want to give a quick thank you to Armonk Baseball League for a $2,500 donation to the softball program, which is outstanding, and then the Armonk Youth Sports Foundation for just over $1,400 to hockey. And also, a bunch of Wampus parents that donated books to the library. So we appreciate all of that, and donations are incredibly helpful, so thank you. So just, we're going to go slightly out of order tonight, just because we have a guest with us, and so we're going to do item 10.2 first, district calendar, and we have another guest with us, so we're going to do 9.1, and then we'll do policies afterwards.
They should suffer like we do.
I figure, given that it's 8:15 already, they suffered enough. So I would, if you'd like to address the board on the topic of calendar, or do you want to just listen to the discussion?
Sure, well, thank you all. So I feel a little silly, because I know it's the calendar, it's not the most critical issue.
No, that's fine.
But since I had written a note, I just felt...
Please just introduce yourself and look at the camera when you do so.
I'm so sorry. My name is Jennifer Sroka, a parent of Coman Hill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since I had just written a note addressing the board, asking them if they would just take into consideration the length of the vacation, I know it's a very petty matter, but two full weeks off for working parents, I know that there were a bunch of working parents that I had spoken to, it's a little bit tricky to have three full days off leading up into a week and a half holiday vacation. Not the concern of the board to figure out people's childcare and arrangements, but just let you guys know that, I'm sure you already do, that there is a bulk of dual-parents working households. So whatever you decide it is, so be, because I do know that there are several factors that go into that, the region's schedule, to name one of them. So that was it. Thank you.
Well, no, we appreciate your input, we do. We do, it's very well, very well written.
Thank you.
And we're, and yeah, feel free to take a seat, but yeah, let us know if you have any other thoughts, but we can just, I think, have a discussion about the calendar, and we did get, you know, a fair amount of feedback, we got multiple emails, five emails to the board, and then all of us have had, you know, discussions with various people in the community. And I think it is fair to say that there's been wide-ranging feedback, and there are views on all sides, which is understandable, because I think even amongst us, we're all like in slightly different positions, and we get the fact that if you have older kids, it could be different than if you have younger kids. If you are working versus want to go on a big vacation, like that's also a difference, like there are a lot of different factors. It may make sense, though, from just the perspective of the community understanding, like the process of the calendar, to talk a little bit about what we have control over and what we don't. And correct me if I'm wrong on this, but you know, we do not have control over when we end because of region's exams. So we're kind of locked into that end of June timeframe, and we also have little control over sort of the number of school days, because that, you know, tends to be, you know, what, given to us from the state. But we do have control, to some extent, over, you know, days here and there, and the calendar for this year, and what a lot of the feedback has been about on both sides, is that two weeks in December, but then starting before Labor Day, versus starting after the Labor Day, but then having a shorter December break. And that, in essence, I think, is probably the discussion that we should have, because that's clearly the heart of the majority of the feedback. I can summarize some of the feedback that we got, but then I really want to open it up to anybody that has...
Something interesting to note, too, is that this sort of opportunity for a break for kids during that two weeks does not happen very often. It happened in 2015, and I think before that it was five or six years earlier. And that really depends not only on the regions, but where the placement of Labor Day is. So it isn't like every year we're going to be having this same discussion. This is like the leapier concept, you know, getting it every...
Makes sense. So then, just summarizing some of the feedback here, I think one point that has been raised by parents with students in the high school is that, you know, at the end of the day, our high school workload is heavy, and similar to many high-quality private schools, and even at the university level, where breaks are longer, so the two weeks from the standpoint of, you know, of some of the feedback we got from high school students was actually a real positive. On the negative side, if you have younger children and you didn't have, like heavily-scheduled break, then two weeks could be a long time, you know, to be out. There is obviously some families that want the travel time to go visit family and have those days before the Christmas holiday, or any holiday they're celebrating, to kind of get to wherever they're going, so that's a positive. And then there were some issues with the end of the summer being a popular vacation time as well. So if you come back before Labor Day, then, you know, there's an issue of cropping vacation. But then we also got feedback that because a lot of the camps end mid-August, including the local camps, as well as sligway camps, there's a big gap between that point and when school starts. And again, if a family's going away, then it's an easy gap to solve. If they're not going away, it's a long stretch to find childcare that's affordable and easily accessible, and so there's, you know, there's a fairly long period of time there. If you're a parent with high school students that play sports in the fall, then it's very easy to come back before Labor Day, because you're going to be back before Labor Day anyway, so there's a contingent of those people as well. So those are some of the themes that I think that we heard, but I'll stop there, and just if anybody else has any either feedback from the community or thoughts on it.
I, I'm old-school to the extent that I always liked schools starting after Labor Day, and that's always been sort of the Byram Hills MO, except when it isn't, and it wasn't a couple of years ago. But this is, it is a close call, because the points that the speaker made in her correspondence as well, I think a lot of them are valid, and they certainly are valid for parents similarly situated. To me, it really comes down to a coin toss, and I think the, to me, the question is, under what calendar do I think the students have the better educational experience? Because ultimately, that's what it really comes down to, not the vacation time, but in what way is their school life more effective, more productive? And to me, I think it's the way the calendar is now, rather than reconstituting it to make for a shorter break in December, although lord knows, two weeks off with young children can be challenging, especially with both parents working can be challenging. But our goal and our role is really to look at this from the point of view of the district as a whole, and above all, the educational effects on the students as a whole, and I think this is preferable. Not easy, not a, it's not a slam dunk, but I think it's preferable.
I mean, I've been vocal about this from the get-go. I, like you, my husband and I go out work full-time, I have children in Coman Hill, Wampus, and the middle school, and the two-week break was exceptionally challenging this year. I think a lot of people do take off that week between Christmas and New Year's, but having that extra week after New Year's was very difficult. We don't have childcare or support, and it's cold, so it's not like you can take the kids to the park, or, you know, it's hard to find things to do, especially when you're working. So that was very challenging, but that's just my personal feeling. Like you said, it's not, this is not something we're setting in stone long-term, this is just for this year. Can I suffer through another year of it? Absolutely. Is it preferable to me personally? No. But, you know, majority rules.
Speaking from a parent, as a parent who has someone in college now, high school and middle school, the level of rigor does really increase, and when you're, you have a junior and a senior in high school, and they're taking almost all college-level classes, colleges have a month off, because the amount of stress these students are undergoing along with the ACTs and the SATs, it's tremendous. It really weighs them down, and to be able to completely decompress and recharge is really important for these students. And it's also an important family time of year. You know, the summer does get very long when they come home from camp, and they have a lot of time, and I know a lot of southern schools and a lot of schools locally also are starting earlier in order to get those AP curriculums in, and we have a, I think, how many AP classes do we have now?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven AP classes, that we're starting a lot of times a week or two behind the southern and the Midwest schools. So thinking about, you know, we all love the rigor of our school, that's, we also have to have these students decompressing, we also have to have the teachers decompress. So I understand where you're coming from, but I also understand that these students, we need, mental health is a big issue today, and we really have to value that these students need to decompress. And that's what I've been hearing from the middle school and the high school. And we did receive an email recently from a mother of an eighth grader and a third grader, I believe, who also echoed that it was nice to have the family time during the holidays. So we are hearing from younger parents as well, that the time is very beneficial for decompressing and having family time.
If I were, if I were building a calendar, I wouldn't build it this way. I wouldn't.
Right. It just seems like it's three days.
I wouldn't build it this way, but the constraints we're under, it makes it hard almost not to build it this way, given what we have to do and the requirements we have, and we can't push classes into July like we might have wanted to do. So I...
I guess where I come out, I think, first of all, I think you said, well, you said it's a close call, I mean, really.
Yeah, it is.
And I also think that if there were overwhelming evidence that the community felt one way versus the other, I would go with it, because this is not an issue that I feel like we should override the will of the community. I mean, if, but I do think, based on the feedback that we got, it was mixed, and there were lots of different reasons, and they're all understandable, and I didn't think in my household, I have multiple reasons why one versus the other would be ideal, I mean, it's just, it's not, there are lots of different factors. I think what pushes me over the edge on the margin to keep it the way it is, is the issue around the high school. And just, given the intensity, it is just a useful thing to have two weeks. And starting a few days earlier, although it's a few days, so again, this is all on the margin, is probably not a bad thing, given that, you know, the testing in the high school, if you're, if you're in that AP track and SAT II track, it's earlier than the end of June. It's not consistent with the regions, and so much of the country does start much earlier. But I think it's important to note that, again, that whatever we decide for this year is not necessarily going to be for next year. We're not setting...
Or even possible for many years.
And it may not even be possible, let alone to choose.
That's what it usually becomes. It's not possible from one way.
Right. So that's kind of where I come, but I mean, I think it's, it really is a close call. Yeah? Anybody else have any thoughts?
I think the way everyone spoke, I, you know, that this seems to be, you know, sort of a 50/50 basis of responses we've gotten, you know, vocalizing, feeling both ways, you know, in favor of what you're saying, and in favor of, you know, Lori, you said about the rigor and having the time to decompress, so, you know, I buy in favor of the way the calendar is right now. I think I agree with you, Scott.
This is one issue where I really have truly no dog in the fight. You know, and I'm trying to really look at it as objectively as I can, because, you know, it's not going to impact my house. It doesn't help, because it's still a very, very close call.
It is, but I, I just to, you know, again, to agree with what Jen is saying, that it's sort of an anomaly. It's that to have it happen two years in a row is an odd, an oddity, like I don't think, I remember the last one was, I would just say 2015, so, and I don't know when we'll see one again, so it's...
Yeah, it's, it's close.
It's close.
And Labor Day, I guess, naturally, just fell a little bit late, right?
As late as it can be.
Yeah.
This issue seems to be even more magnified because it's two years in a row.
Right, that's right, exactly.
Look, and again, I mean, everything was said, and I think just something that, you know, one of Ira's points is what kind of sticks with me, even in my family, like Scott said, and others, you know, there's benefits of, you know, both sides here, but again, I think as our fiduciary duties and our obligation as a board is to think about, as Ira said, the academic aspect of this, and I think putting aside things that are extremely important, like family time, desire to travel, I think, looking at the landscape now and the amount of stress not only our high school kids are in, but our middle school kids as well, and our whole focus on this push to wellness, I think having that time probably is beneficial, having that two weeks. But again, like Scott said, if the community was overwhelmingly, you know, in support of starting after Labor Day, I, you know, would have no problem with that either. It's a tough one, it is a close call.
I think that's important to say, I think, you know, sometimes there's an argument that takes place on social media, and you think, oh, everybody feels this way. But we did get a tremendous amount of email on both sides, and I think that's very important to say that there was not a clear-cut way that, you know, the majority, where we could say, well, the majority of people were against this, this calendar, we really can't say that.
Yeah, it was pretty evenly split. Yep, I can see that. So we appreciate you coming down.
We do.
We've been talking here, you know, it's been a while since I wrote a note.
No, your mother won't.
We appreciate your coming out.
Your perspective, thank you for your patience.
We'll give you an extra day of vacation if you want.
You will get one superintendent babysitting day.
Scott, did Ira volunteer to watch your children?
Absolutely.
Just one day.
You may want to Google me first.
My children are in college, I'll take your children's alone.
Ira, can you call her boss?
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
No, everybody knows it's impossible to work from home when you have little kids.
Yep, so motion?
Yeah. Lucky, I have a boss, I can, I do, can bring my child to work, but I do know other people that cannot, so that's why I was very, very...
Your voice was heard.
So, thank you, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
So motion to adopt the calendar.
Second. I, I some moved.
Second. All in favor? Any, any against? Okay, motion carries.
Okay. You don't have to stay.
You're welcome to, but you're not...
You're welcome to stay, we're here for a while. Thank you, I might stay for a few more minutes. Oh, you'll hear something really fun.
Yeah, okay, so, we go to curriculum conversation, social studies. Can you jump in?
Yeah.
Welcome.
So thank you, welcome, Jen. And so, you know that in October, we do our curriculum conversation with the entire administrative team, and we bring everyone together, we talk about our goals, and you get a pretty good sense of the work that's being done. What I wanted to do this year is start to bring in our academic chairs and directors of the other programs, to have us be able to dive a little bit deeper into the work that's being done in the department. Chris Wall started to do this with his chairs and directors meetings, asking them to present a state of the department. So I thought it's really exciting to bring the academic chairs up here to talk to you about the work that's being done in their departments, what progress they're making toward their goals, and what their next steps are, and what the impact is on our kids. So tonight is an attempt at our state of the department, focusing on social studies. And I think the timing is good, just coming off the heels of the Iowa caucus, where we're starting to see the democratic process.
Starting to see.
Starting to see.
If the app, if the app works.
If the app, ever...
If the app works, I think...
Jen, thanks for waiting for us.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks for waiting.
You know, before I jump in, just on your last conversation, feedback from the students was at the high school, those two weeks really did make a difference, that students just felt, they really did feel decompressed, as well as the staff, too, and when kids got back, they were ready. And it wasn't like, oh, I wish I had a day or two, they were ready to learn, so...
Didn't wait to get back.
So, yeah, so I think it was, it's really, it's, it's nice to embrace it when we can. But let's embrace a little bit of history. I stole the title of my presentation from a book by Sam Weinberg from Stanford University, and he wrote the book, Why Learn History When It's Already on Your Phone? And we know, in this age of Google everything, you might ask the question, well, why do we bother studying history? We could just look it up if we forgot it. And the case he makes, and his group at Stanford as an organization they call Reading Like a Historian, is really, it's not the facts and the figures and the dates, it's really the thinking. And it's the thinking behind history is what really we need to be working on, because that's really going to create good citizens. And so I'll talk a little bit today about how we're trying to broach that in both the middle school and the high school.
Let me just remind the board, if you have questions along the way, jump in.
Yeah, please interrupt.
And we'll be fluid with the direction of it.
Yeah, great. So I started with this quote, this was from an article we read as a department, about how history class divides us, and we know we're living in very divisive times, politically, culturally, and this one social studies teacher said, I tell students that this is the most important class you're going to have all year, because it's going to teach you how to think about what people are saying to you. And we know that there's so much information coming at us and at our students, whether it be social media or, you know, television, and they're sort of being bombarded with it. And really, the work of historians is to help them think about that. What should I think about? What question should I be asking and considering when I'm getting all this information? And that's really what we start with. It really gives students tools in which to understand information about the past, but also about information that they're living with today. And so, the work of social studies, and I think you've heard me share this, that curriculum conversation, has really changed over the years since we were all in school, when we had to memorize a bunch of dates, and a bunch of facts, and a bunch of people, and spit them back out again. And that's really not what the field of social science is anymore, it's really beyond factual acquisition and about historical thinking skills, how do I analyze the past as well as current issues? And so as a department, we've been reflecting on that over the past number of years, and starting to think about, well, what are the shifts we need to make as a department in terms of curriculum, in terms of our teaching, in terms of our assessments, so that what we really value is what we teach, and so that's what we've been working on. At the same time, the world that we have to live in has shifted too, in a good way. Our, the stars are sort of aligned, so the New York State framework was rewritten, and it no longer focuses on that tiny sort of factual information, it focuses on conceptual understanding as well as historical thinking skills. The College Board has rewritten all of their history courses to also align with historical thinking and big conceptual thinking. And the region's exam, we had a brand-new region's exam for the 10th graders last year, and then there'll be a new one for 11th graders this coming year, and again, all based on these bigger ideas and that thinking. And the big change is now that everything that students have to do is stimulus-based or source-based, so they really have to do the work of a historian. What questions do you ask? How do you interact with sources in order to demonstrate your understanding? Versus, did I remember, you know, a discrete name, or a date, or a fact?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Does the, called present-day, study of history also involve the evaluation of the credibility of the sources?
Absolutely. That's, that's probably the most important thing. So it's, it's thinking about the source, what's the point of view of that source, what's the purpose, the intended audience, the context, and that's really the driving force of what we're working with kids, so they understand that a source is just one source, but you really have to dig in. And that's kind of the fun work that we're doing with kids, from six all the way to 12.
Is there, at this point, a good enough alignment between the New York State curriculum and the region's, the AP curriculum, and then to the extent that kids take it, which not all kids will in every subject, but SAT II's, which are like testing slightly different skills?
Yeah. The SAT II is like a little behind the eight ball. Everything else has shifted, and they are not quite there yet, which is unfortunate. Hopefully, that'll be the next one to go.
It's still more fact-based.
It's still more fact-based, yeah, so it's not, it's not a great test, and it's, it's really just multiple choice, it's a little bit of luck, you know? But the other test really tests thinking and skills, so if you've had really great instruction, and you didn't remember everything, you could do well, versus the SAT II is a little more, a little bit more of a gotcha.
Jen, can you give us an example of a question that would be more geared toward historical thinking and perspective of what you found?
Yeah, yeah, so like, you know, you might have had an old question that said, you know, which of the following leaders led a nationalist movement? And you'd have like four people, and you'd have to pick out the nationalist leader. But now, there would be like maybe two, one or two sources from nationalist leaders, and they might ask you a question about, what, which of the following questions might a historian ask upon reviewing these two sources? So it's really sort of, do I, I still need to understand nationalism, I need, understand the concept, but now I need to think about, like, what's useful about these sources?
That's a great example.
How am I going to use them? That's one example.
I have a quick question for you. If you look at like the way, I guess, and this may have changed too over time, but the way college social studies used to be organized, there'd be two types of courses. You'd have a survey course, which is pretty much like what you'd need World History or AP US History, and then you'd also have courses that go really deep into a specific time, World War II, the Holocaust, or Revolutionary War, or Revolutionary Times, America. From a high school standpoint, like is there any value to like more narrow, or because everything's so new, is the more survey-oriented courses like just the...
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting, so way both the regions on the College Board have rewritten it, is they're trying to live a little bit in both worlds. So by starting with these big conceptual understandings, the teachers actually have some choice in which how to teach the concept. So you don't have to necessarily teach every example, you could teach maybe, you know, one, but really deep. And so they're trying to encourage that, particularly the AP World History course, it's, you know, so much history all around the world, and so they have what they call illustrative examples. So they give you suggestions on examples that you could use, but you can actually use a different example, as long as it fits the big concept. So they're trying to kind of find a happy medium between the two, because you do want, like in US History, you do want a sense of the story, you know, but you do want kids to have more depth of knowledge as well.
Got it.
And then, Jen, we're going to explore next year with a new course on race, class, and culture in the United States, which will be an example of taking a deep dive into a particular aspect of American history.
Right.
And I just set up a visitation with some of the teachers who are teaching that course with the directed studies program at Yale, so we're going to go in and see what they're doing in that program, which is a seminar-based class, as well as lecture and content with the seminar style, looking at literature, and the teachers want to learn from that experience, so we're talking to the chairperson of that program, who's been gracious to let us come in and observe.
Because they don't let anyone come in.
They don't.
Except him both.
I couldn't believe they took my call.
Yeah, so through our elective office, we should get a little more opportunity to do that as well. So thank you for that question.
That's the best professional development.
That's great.
These are just some, there's just a little bit of overview on what we think about now that we're shifting to this instruction. We've, again, been working on this for a number of years. So one simple thing is, you want to frame your lesson with a really compelling, debatable question. Already, you're saying to the kids, like, let's figure this out, let's look through the sources. You know, was World War I really inevitable? You know, could it have been avoided? That'd be an interesting question. Let's examine the sources to sort of see where it goes. We're trying to continue to implement more authentic, performance-based assessments. We still use the textbook, but going way beyond it. The textbook is really a source. It's written by a person who has a point of view, and what are the other sources that we should use? You know, instead of, sometimes we call it like, well, the Green Book, or the Blue Book, no, we should call it, you know, by the author's name, because there's a person who wrote that who has a definite view of history, so we talk about things like that. And really, moving to more student-centered environment, where students are doing the work of historians by looking at the sources and asking questions, and what should that classroom look like? And then additionally, again, back to sort of the divisive times we're living in, is practicing the skills of civil discourse. So when we're talking about tough historical, current events, issues, what does a good conversation look like? How can you agree, ask questions, probe in a civil way? So those are all kinds of skills.
Would it be considered appropriate to have the students argue, let's say, each side of the Brown v. Board of Education decision?
You could.
No, would that be considered another appropriate?
Yeah.
Someone say, how can you argue the side in favor of segregation? But, you know, it was something that consumed the country for many years.
Right, so you understand the perspective.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying. It's a historical tool, that would be something valuable.
Absolutely. Yeah, and what, yeah, again, what did the sources reveal at the time, and why?
Right.
What was the context of the time? We want kids always to understand context, instead of sort of presentism, like we can't really always look at history from our present view, what was the context? And why did people think that way? So that's some of the work there. And so what, where we've landed with all of this is, you know, first, when we started playing around with it, we said things like, well, we do teach historical thinking, of course, it's in our curriculum, kids are always thinking. But when we really had an honest conversation, we said, "Well, maybe we know we're doing historical thinking, but do the kids know we're doing historical thinking? How explicit are we really?" And when we really were, you know, honest in the mirror, we said, "Maybe we're not explicit enough." So, we did some work over the past year on identifying what we've come up with as four historical thinking skills. And we came up with what we call signposts, and those are sort of those little numbers underneath. And that's really, this is the work of a historian. So, if you look at, on the upper left in the green, we know good historians are skillful at looking at evidence. So, this is really that source work, that you're doing corroboration. You're not just looking at one source, you're looking at multiple sources to reach the truth. You're looking at reliability. What's the point of view, the purpose of a document? That's all the good, practical stuff we should be doing every day. And then, good historians also explain why things happen. So, they look at causation. And causation could be multiple things. It could be conditions. But there's also unintended consequences of events as well, and they might look at that. And then, good historians also understand that things change, but they also stay the same. And sometimes, the analysis of continuity is really important, because we think, you know, yes, there is rapid change all the time, but why do some things remain? And we have to sort of look at that. And why do certain groups lead to progress for some groups, but decline for others? And we have to kind of think about that in terms of change over time as well. And all of these skills lead up to the upper right there, is that good historians develop and write clear arguments. So, all of these underlying skills help us understand the sources, analyze the events, but we can communicate it in a way that's clear, and that there's a line of argument. Sometimes, we'll say to the students, and, you know, we have really good, hard-working students, and they like to tell you everything they learned. You know, "I learned it, you're going to hear it, I'm writing it down." And really, what we want to work on is a clear line of argument. Everything you learn isn't necessary. How can you develop a clear line of thinking to express your point of view or your argument? And so, those are the skills we work on.
So, Jen, is this a teacher document, or do kids?
So, this is a kid document, not a teacher document. So, if you spent any time in the schools recently, hopefully, you saw them hanging in classrooms, in the hallway. And so, this idea is, this is the language we want kids to be using when they talk about what they're doing. And so, we developed this all together. We massaged it, and we all, as a 6th to 12th group, said we're going to use it. And it's funny, some of the 6th grade teachers in particular first go, "I don't know. I mean, some of these words, they're kind of hard. I'm not sure they could do it." Particularly, the word corroboration. They said, "I'm not sure if a 6th grader knows it." Well, fast forward a year, and they tell me, just the other day, "My 6th graders love saying corroboration." And they totally know what it means, because, you know, here's a source, they go, "We need to corroborate that." You know, and it's like this active piece of history. And as long as you explain what the words are, and you practice it, they know the words. You know, and it gives them sort of power and the tools of, uh...
That's awesome.
...of history. So, this has been really good for us, because it really takes skills and breaks them into pieces, and it tells kids exactly what it is we expect them to do. So, this has been some good work that we've been working through. And I want to show you a couple of examples of what it looks like for kids in the classroom. These two photographs are kind of two fun things happening now. On the left, this is a great project. It's a collaboration between the 7th grade social studies teachers and the AP government teacher, Tom Andriello. And they're both teaching how a bill becomes a law, and about Congress. And so, what they decided to do was collaborate between the two. So, the 7th graders are writing potential bills, and the AP government kids are coming over and working as their advisors. And they're helping them understand the complexity of the government process, that it's not just, "Do I write a bill?", but there might be interest groups, and lobbyists, and what are all the things that might get in my way that, you know, might, you know, block me from getting my bill through. So, this has been going on this week over at the middle school. And then, next week, they'll actually vote on certain bills, and the seniors are going to take, play the role of the senate. So, it's been really great to see, you know, this kind of fun collaboration between the two buildings. And then, on the right, this is an example of something called a timeline with attitude. This happens to be in an AP US History class. But this is a technique where students have different events on different sheets, and they have different years. And they sort of massage the events using different historical thinking. Like, they might say, "Well, which events were most significant in a period, and why?" You'd have to sort of move them. Or, choose which event do you think best represents the time period, and why? Or, you could even give kids like a thesis statement and say, "Which events might support that thesis statement, which might disagree with it?" So, it's a way of sort of, you know, moving around history and sort of playing with the events.
What do you call that activity?
A timeline with attitude. With attitude. So, that's something they do in the middle school, all the way up through AP classes. But they might just ask different questions. But it's kids sort of interacting with events and thinking about them, and what's the impact of those events. So, those are kind of fun examples. Here's one from 8th grade. So, this, you see up the top, they're good historians explain how things changed or stayed the same. And this was for a civil rights unit. And they asked the students to work as historians and investigate what led to the change of civil rights. So, they had to look at who's responsible, what actions, what about the rate of change? Was there a turning point? So, all sort of like, you know, not just, "Did it change, yes or no?", a little bit more like complexity, and the thinking skills help us do that. And so, the students worked in groups, and they chose a particular issue, and they analyzed the task, and they had a choice where they could either produce a documentary or a children's book that had to convey their understanding. So, here's a little student example. We'll look at this first one from the voting rights. Now, if you want to, if you look at your blue box, which is your causation box, as you watch, see if you see any evidence of students using that thing.
Yeah, well, no. Okay. Are we going to be assessed on this? We'll just play a show. We'll see if we can get it. These are our students.
The right to vote is one of the most basic civil rights. It allows people to influence their country and play a part in their government. For a government to truly be based on the people, the people must be able to impact the country.
And that's exactly what the right to vote does. It lets people impact their government. The right to vote is so necessary for citizens, but for a long time, lots of citizens didn't have it.
The 15th Amendment was signed in 1870, stating that the right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of race, color, or previous condition of servitude. This was intended to give all people the vote, but it didn't work out.
But states found a way to get around the amendment. Poll taxes, literacy tests, and grandfather classes were enacted to prevent African-Americans from voting.
Poll taxes with Souths were getting around the 15th Amendment.
According to the 15th Amendment, so many people had the legal rights to vote, but the South didn't want it that way. They enacted poll taxes, literacy tests, and grandfather classes, where you had to prove that your grandfather could vote before you, so that they could vote. And it wasn't fair, and a lot of people in the South weren't happy.
Protest and marches started to take hold on the country, hoping for the right to vote. The Somerton Montgomery March, the March on Washington and others showed the government that the right to vote was really worth it.
On August 28th, 1963, the March on Washington took place. People in the march wanted many different civil rights, including fair treatment, fair job applications, and voting rights.
The March on Washington was one of the most memorable parts of the Civil Rights Amendment. When you look back on it, there was so much that African-Americans were trying to fight in that march, whether it be discrimination at stores, on buses, or at the polls. But one thing that they were really fighting for was their right to say what they wanted and to influence the government. And that came from the right to vote.
The Somerton?
Okay. You get a little sense of that. I think the potential like TV broadcaster. Yes. So, do you see any evidence of them analyzing causation?
Mm-hmm.
Definitely. So, they really have to sort of look at the civil rights, and what were the causes? What were the conditions? What were some of the unintended consequences? To what extent was it a turning point? And that lens to the event helps them think about the event in a much more complex way. Okay, that's great. So, we'll skip to 10th grade?
Yeah, why don't we go and jump to then, so, a question I'm thinking about, and she has lots of examples in the slides in your packet, if you wanted to look a little deeper. But what I'm wondering is, so, kids are using this language, and, you know, part of this is making this thinking visible to the kids, you know, using these words like corroborate, so that they can now see this, see what they're doing as they go through it. And what we've talked about before is the metacognitive piece, is getting kids to reflect on their thinking. So, how is that incorporated, and how do you know this is having an impact on the kids?
Okay, so, maybe we'll talk about the self-assessments a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'll skip over these, and we can go back to them if you have questions. So, there's a couple of different examples, but I'm going to get to how we monitor our progress. So, what we decided to do a couple of years ago is start asking the students to self-assess themselves in terms of the historical thinking skills. And we did it twice a year, usually in December, and then maybe March or April. And what the students did was, for each historical thinking skill, they gave themselves a 1 to a 4. So, 1 is, "I'm not sure if I understand this skill." 2 is, "I understand it, but I need teacher support to demonstrate it." 3 is, "I can use it independently, but not consistently." And 4 is, "I can do it consistently." And so, the students went through each skill and sort of self-reported where they thought they were. And then, we asked them to reflect on how they use that skill. Could they give us an example? And then, choose another skill that was a challenge, and how it was a challenge. And what we found was, so, we have two years of data to look at. So, we did it in, I compared December of last year to December of this year. And here's one example, which was kind of exciting. So, this is one year of really more explicitly using the language, and we noticed that, this is in terms of reliability. So, this is point of view, purpose, context, that students were shifting to that 4, that was that independent, "I can do it consistently and independently." So, about 13% more students moved themselves from a 3 to the 4 category. And when we looked at the other examples as well, it was like, on average, about a 10-point shift from, "I can do it independently but not consistently," to, "I can do it more consistently." And so, that gave us some, you know, confidence that it was starting to make a difference, and students were starting to see a difference. And then, it's interesting to see it in the students' own words. So, here's just a couple of examples. So, we asked the students to choose a skill and give an example of how they demonstrated it. And this was some of the great feedback. And then, I organized it for the teachers, so they could all read what their own students wrote, and it had so much power for them to really see their own students' words about what they were doing. So, if you look at the first one, she says, "I demonstrate the ability to make inferences from a variety of sources, because I can easily identify the purpose of a source to get a certain message across. I'm able to identify what different sources are saying, and based on their claim, I'm able to understand the main idea of a certain event and infer what different sides may have thought." So, they're able to, you know, and this is, you know, something they were doing sort of quick in class, that they're able to really identify what it is. And then, even maybe more exciting was when they wrote about what challenged them, they still could explain what the skill was. So, you know, let's look at this, you know, the corroborating. Corroborating can sometimes be challenging, because you have to fact-check many things, and you have to make sure that everything can be trusted for using it somewhere. So, even though this is a challenge for the student, they knew what it meant. But they knew that they still have to continue working at it. So, that was really good feedback for us, that we felt like things were moving in the right direction.
So, that self-awareness is part of helping a student identify areas to work on. And now, throughout their classes, they could become explicit to work on that.
Yeah, yeah. I love what the last student said about reliability of sources. Yeah? "I have to spend more time with looking at a source and using more context and thinking skills to understand what everything about the source is saying."
Yeah. Yeah, so, it was really, you really got great numbers from the students.
That's grand, right?
Yeah, I know.
And it's making them thinkers versus memorizing.
Exactly.
And that's terrific.
Exactly. Yeah, and that's, you know, those are transferable skills. You're going to forget stuff, and you can just look it up on your phone.
Kids are going to say one. I'm from the thinking generation.
Thinking.
Yeah.
So, Jen, where, as a department, are you headed next? You know, you've been spending time, and this has been work that Jen's been doing since she's been in Byron Hills, leading the social studies department, is really working on the thinking piece and managing the shift to the new social studies framework. You're making progress with this. I've seen it in the classroom. I've seen the activities that students are doing. Is it continuing with this? Is it going deeper in any of these?
Yeah, I mean, it's really like, this is what we do. You know, like, this is the work of social studies. And now, it's like, let's do it really well. So, let's do it consistently, let's do it vertically. So, we're building, you know, a collection of lessons and curriculum from 6th to 12th, and we're sharing ideas, so that we want the 11th grade teachers to understand in US History what it might look for a 7th grader, and so, they can see the connections between the two, and we can sort of build on that rigor. And really, being explicit for kids. The number-one reflection after the teachers reviewed that data was, "You've got to keep using the language, keep using the language. It's working. Be more explicit, keep using the language." And we really want to be able to sort of map that curriculum in a way that makes sense. And we can always kind of go back and revisit it, so it's an iterative process.
I have to say, we took a recent visit to Cridanin, and we got to hear all about how the 7th graders are collaborating with the, is it the 9th grader?
The 12th grader.
And, you know, as a board member, just listening to that, and how they have to address, what was it?
Ms. Lappel, the president.
The president.
Yeah.
And as a parent, my daughter came home and was like so immersed in it, and talking about hoping that her bill becomes a law, and the practicality of that, and conceptually, actually, like, living, you know, the working government, I think, is amazing. It was really, you know, very different than when we went to school and just learned about, you know...
Right, you just maybe understand, you had to memorize the steps.
Right.
Now, you're actually doing the work.
So, I'm very excited about it, and sticking with, you know, an older student like that was really very, very beneficial with their learning.
Yeah, and it was great for the 12th graders too, because they had to really know their stuff, they had to play a leadership role, they had to work on really being a good listener, you know, and I think they learned just as much as the 7th graders.
Did they go to HCC?
Yeah, they did, yeah.
Wasn't all virtual, they actually?
No, they went. They went a couple of days, and I think they're going back to, oh, the best, tomorrow, they're coming back. And for those whose bills were selected, if the, some of the 12th graders wrote briefing memos about the issue, and so, if their bill has moved forward, they're going to now testify as expert witnesses about a certain issue. So, that's tomorrow. Yeah, so, it's really great.
Bring the briefing books, the high school kids with all the background knowledge to share, so...
Congress won't be able to understand it.
I know, I know. Well, we're training the future.
Do they have an app for this?
That's, that's, yeah. So, it's been, it's really been great. It's been great work, and I think it's something that the department really can get behind, because we know this is really what kids need, and this is what we want for our future. We want kids to be thinking, asking questions, and not just assuming, you know, whatever they pops up on social media.
What this just reminds me of is you basically, to me, moved an AP curriculum into the day-to-day study of history.
That's it, yeah.
And that's terrific.
Yeah.
That's really terrific.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for this.
It's exciting work.
Great, thank you.
You're empowering more years, you're like all the huge...
But Jen, you are the example for them.
Oh, thank you.
You are.
Jen models all this in the classroom.
Yeah, she models constantly.
Jen, just terrific.
Great department.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thanks so much. All right, policies.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Bye.
Want to hear phones?
Come back again, you'll be our only person, we would love you.
I felt a little funny because I know I'm such a minor.
No, no.
Do you need to be heard?
This is what this community is about, so...
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Yes, we love you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and thank you for saying.
Have a good night. So, we've got three policies.
That was crazy. That was really cool.
It's such great work. So policies, Jean and I have a few policies to talk about. I'll first talk about policy 7000, which is the facility's development goals. I want to thank the policy committee again, and one of our goals is to go back and look at, we're always bringing in and cycling policies that are more than 10 years old. We want to be reviewing those policies to make sure that they are up to date, that they align with state regulations and with any changes in law and that they actually match our practices. So we'll be presenting a series of facilities policies to you recently, a lot of them were connected and so we've been grouping them together. So the facilities development goal is a goal of yours to the way that we review our facilities and has an action plan and process in place. This policy was old, it was adopted in 2005. We reviewed it with Kelly and with Steve Thompson and went through it and this is its current, it still holds to the regulations and these are our practices. So we're not recommending any changes except a few things to the references there. Other than that, the policy is still relevant and we'd like to re-adopt it. And the person, the reason to re-adopt it, if we were ever to have an issue and someone was to go look at our policy, we don't want to say, oh, well, that policy is so old, the district has been ignoring it. This shows us that we are reviewing it and we want to re-adopt it even if there's not any change.
Part of continuous improvement model.
Part of continuous improvement is show that our eyes were on it, we gave it a thorough look and it is still current. So there's no major recommendation, recommended changes to that.
The only thing I would add, and it kind of says this in the cover about safe and comfortable, just, you know, you would think facilities, there should be some security, like some component of security within the goals, that's the only thing I'm...
That's going to come up in some other policies. So we will have that and there's, you'll see school building safety is recommended in this. There are some other policies that will be related that will come up that may address that and if not, we can certainly come back to that.
That's great.
Okay. The next one is construction safety, so that's the next policy that specifically talks about when we're doing a construction project. This is policy 7365. This outlines the processes when we are doing a major construction project, pre-construction, during construction...
I remember when this was initially drafted, I helped write it.
And post-construction, right, that was 2000, or 2005.
Yep.
We're looking at it again, there are minor changes to it, nothing major in this, it is still the processes that we follow. We actually used this recently when we were testing it out with Kelly and Steve, the construction project to the auditorium at the high school. We went through these steps to make sure that that was actually the practice that happened and it was indeed. This is still aligned, we looked back at the law and the regulations and there weren't any changes to that and it's still a current policy as way of law and regulation. A few tweaks to the cross-references and a small wordsmith change. Other than that, the policy committee felt this was a strong policy and still recommended by Kelly and Steve as well. And then the third one.
Sure, it's pesticides and pest management, management, policy 8115. So again, just, this was an older policy that needed to be looked at again and hopefully adopted tonight. Again, thinking about maintaining our school buildings, that it is necessary at times to use obviously a very least toxic approach in terms of pest management if needed. But the one major change in the policy was the notification process. So the notification is put out annually in our school calendar for parents who would like to opt-in and receive notification when and if we do have to apply pesticides. The contact information is provided to the parent and then it is on the district to notify them accordingly that says in here the 48-hour notice or if there's school vacations or summer vacation that we follow the process in here. So that would be the only change in terms of notification.
I move to adopt as a first read, policy 7000, 7365 and 8115.
Second.
On to site-based mid-year report. Site-based team, it's our mid-year reports, you can read the mid-year reports in your packet from each of the building principals. I just want to mention that the next district-wide site-based meeting will be February 27th at 4:00 PM at the high school. We're continuing our year of a book read, we're continuing the discussion, it's Mark Brackett's book. Mark Brackett is the director of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. His new book, Permission to Feel. We had an engaging meeting at our last district-wide site-based team meeting, which was really great about wellness and we're going to dive a little deeper into the research in the book and its implications in our schools. You will see that the building-level site-based teams are focusing a lot on wellness and you'll see that as you read through it.
I don't know how many districts in the state still have site-based teams, I fear it's probably very few. We may be one of, one perhaps, but I do think it still serves a salutary purpose for the district and you can see the work that's being done, it's still good work, so I for one am happy the site-based teams are still involved. Their role has changed over the years, but I think their role now is equally effective.
Thank you. All right, on to superintendent.
So I think site-based is as good as its facilitator.
Gosh. Who was that?
So I have attended those and the facilitation was so amazing that the Byram Hills Education Foundation asked Tim to come and similarly facilitate a roundtable discussions for a BH E F night, which really started some great conversations with parents, some shared thinking about our children and what we would like for our children in the community. So, Tim, I have to say, you are by far the greatest facilitator of discussions I have ever met.
Stay out of the way and let people have...
We're doing, and that's why site-based is so successful.
Great discussions.
Your radiative abilities really are terrific, Tim.
And he understands, yeah.
Really positive on that.
Very.
Very good. Thank you.
And just getting protocols together for people to be heard but also to move conversations in a productive direction, not always easy.
Not always easy.
Right, in any...
It's scary if you want to really follow the will of the people, so...
So, Tim, thank you for that.
And do you without upsetting anyone.
Well, yeah, I don't know if that happens, but...
Really well done.
As long as you're heard, then people are heard.
Tim was not facilitating the Westchester Department School Board Association and CSA Roundtables Legislative Forum, but I found those very informative, Scott and I were there. We had, there were members of the Senate and the Assembly there and really just talking about legislative priorities. A lot of people were talking about student safety, equity, local flexibility, I'm going to hear those, that word until I die, local flexibility, and really looking at the foundation aid formula. So that was something to report. Next thing was, Tim and I attended yesterday, Southern Westchester BOCs held graduation measures in New York State, roundtable discussions, what do we want students to know and be able to do by the time they graduate? I think our tables pulled interesting information, it was good sharing, but...
Range of perspectives.
Yeah, what I really liked though was the School Superintendent's Association's publication of Redefining Ready. And that focuses on college-ready, life-ready and career-ready. And that's a document that Tim and I both have and I've talked to Chris Walsh about. And I think that having those college-ready, life-ready and career-ready paths will help us to meet the needs of all of these different children. So it is good to rethink that and I'm grateful that that work is happening. And the last part is student highlights. We had Nora Lowe, a semifinalist in the grade nine to 12 group, Tim is so excited about this, who submitted her idea for the Mars 2020 name for the rover essay contest. And she's one of three students from New York to, the goal of it was to inspire interest in the field of exploration. She's one of 52 semifinalists and...
Can you imagine?
The winner will be announced February 18th. Wait, and she'll, the winner, she'll, I'm already giving it to her, she will be invited to see the spacecraft launch on July 2020 from Cape Canaveral.
Wow.
Nora, we are really hoping for you and I hope that you get to bring your superintendent as a show.
I thought you were going to say she's on the way.
We only wish to do the great things our kids do.
That's amazing, good.
And I want to commend some of our art students. We had three students represented the best of Byram Hills Visual Arts Program at Start 2020. It's the 14th Annual Regional Student Art Exhibition. So David Schwimmer received an award of excellence for his painting Just Another Day. Veronica Zowojek, we've seen her work before with the Exoskeleton Wings, you probably saw that at the Armagh Art Show. And A.J. Plucides's work, Another Day in the Office, was on display there. So congratulations to all of you. Pictures in your...
In my packet.
In your packet, yeah.
It looks great, yeah.
Very talented. Yeah, really so much going on in the world. And that is all the superintendent has to offer.
I don't think it's good.
Kelly?
I was looking at the pictures. Just quickly, the governor came out with his budget for the second year in a row, he's talking about making some changes to foundation aid, not significant changes where more funds are going to be distributed, but just combining all the aids into one category. This is the first time he released his run by every school district, he just came out with one category of foundation aid. And what he's proposing is, so just quick background, there's expense-driven aids and there's aids just based on educational fundamentals. So expense-driven aids are, first is BOCs. If you spend a lot of money on BOCs, you say you replace a bunch of computers, you find they're BOCs, you get essentially a reimbursement, you get state aid on what you spent. So the more you spend, the more you receive back as an aid. He's talking about kind of freezing that going forward, which is a significant issue for Byram Hills and other districts in this area who spend a lot of money in technology or textbooks, things like where we get reimbursements. So his idea is to kind of freeze that going forward and give you basically a percentage on a yearly basis of aid. So regardless if you spent a million dollars or a hundred dollars, you get the same amount. And what that really does and what he's doing by combining that into one category, you're losing that transparency, you're losing that history going back. So right now, when I look at the run by our district, I can compare it going back year to year, so I know that we had a big increase in BOCs aid, it's because we replaced the fleet of computers. There's a reason behind it. So his idea of lumping it all together, you really don't see how, what changes are going to make year to year, so you just see a number increase. And the number increase could be because you spent more on BOCs or it could be because he's changed kind of the formulas without showing you exactly line by line what changes on a yearly basis.
Because he's coupled it all together.
Because he's combined it all together. Another issue that we have with that is it kind of artificially shows an increase in foundation aid. Foundation aid has always been underfunded, back 10 years when they did the gap elimination adjustment where they kind of, they had a big gap in the state budget.
They stole money from us.
I won't say that, but they used money from school districts to cover that gap and the districts never got it back.
Right.
Okay. So I think part of this is combining the aid to show, you know, we're having, he's going to show an increase in foundation aid because he's lumping these old aids together. So he can show that, hey, you know, I have gave money back to foundation aid, it's artificial. So that's one of the major reasons and that's what's going to hurt us. You know, I'm in the Government Relations Board for the, for our state ASBO, for our Association of Business Officials, they really don't feel this is something he's going to really push for, they think this is kind of a negotiation, he's going to have it all legislatures at this point. But again, something that our legislators are going to have to fight to kind of get rid of, and again, this is the second year in a row that he's proposed this, so something that they're really in need to fight against. Another proposal, he has a bunch of proposals, but not that are really going to affect us here. But one is the bill, he's talking about changes to building aid, reducing our building aid that we're going to get on a yearly basis going forward. And we're already at kind of the minimum level that we can get, so any reduction below that would obviously be an issue for us. But he's also suggesting that last year, we, and it's a good thing we did it last year, the turf field, we had a turf field and we combined the turf field with the windows at the high school in order to get aid on the turf field. He's proposing going forward, districts won't have that ability to do that. So for instance, anything non, not related to an education building or facility would not be aided at all. So that's one of his proposals also. So those two proposals will really affect us, we're going to be talking to our legislators in my group, I have a meeting with the legislators in two weeks to discuss this and just kind of make sure that they're, they understand our side of it and can fight for us. But those are his two proposals in terms of state aid that really affect us, he's got a bunch that won't affect us at this point, but those two are going to affect us. And we didn't really need a large jump in terms of foundation aid. When you break it out into the categories, you know, very, very low amount, 2% or so.
So for us, if we, if it was all closed, then you fast forward next year and let's say we have a surge in need to buy technology, for example, it's not going to correlate to that anymore. It's going to correlate to some, let's assume it's an increase of 2% increase in the aid or whatever the increase is for the year.
Yes.
It's like decoupling it from the...
So it would help you if, say this year, we bought a tremendous amount of things through BOCs, you know, one year, that would help you because if you spent less the next year, you're better.
You're being pegged off the high year.
Right. So, yeah, if we do, yeah, exactly. But another thing about it is it's kind of, it's hurting BOCs if this happens also at some point, why are you going to BOCs if you're not getting BOCs?
Right, you're not.
Because you get the BOCs aid the following year. At some point, there's no reason to go to BOCs, you go to your vendors, you negotiate and you might have it lowered up. So it might have significant effects on our BOCs as well. But the governor's always pushed with his departments is 2% max for any increases on a yearly basis. So I could see him going forward, if he froze it, you know, 2% on any other aid would be the max you'd ever receive. But again, if it's, if it's an artificial number based on one year, snapshot on one year, it doesn't reflect your, what you're buying on a yearly basis, so it's not apples to apples, if that makes sense. I'll have more information on the next, on the next meeting, budget presentation is the administrator's adopt, I proposed budget on March 3rd, so I have a lot of information. I should have some more hard numbers there. And then finally, Transfinder report for our study for efficiency and routing, should have that report this week hopefully and then he'll be at the next board meeting to review with the legislature.
Great, thank you.
Okay, good. All right.
The Westchester Department of School Boards is hosting that, the School Smart Times. Yeah.
I'd like to put that, just let Jeanine know.
Yeah, I will.
Okay. And if anyone else wants to go.
Yeah, it should be interesting.
I'll have her send it out in anticipation to everyone.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, board reports, I think generally covered the West Pot event, so I don't have anything else to add. Anybody have anything to share?
Just, no, no, not yet, the sports thing, we have, this season, we have the girls' basketball team ranked, I think ninth by the Journal News in the county, which is pretty excellent. And the boys is ranked, I think, fifth or sixth, I read the article this morning, fifth or sixth in the county. On, I guess it was Friday night, they had an incredibly thrilling overtime win at Rye, which is like a house of horrors for us, where a player sank a three-pointer at the buzzer to put the game into overtime and the team won. So, you know, what Teddy Reeper does every year, remarkable. But the girls' basketball team is worthy of note, they're young and they're playing terrifically and I think this team really could open some eyes on the next, this year and going forward, so congratulations to them. And we have two wrestlers that are ranked one, brothers in fact, one is ranked number one in his weight class and the other ranked number three. And we have a wrestler who won his 100th match at Byram Hills, which is almost unheard of, so for a team that gets probably very little publicity, they're really doing, they're punching above their weight.
And we don't have that many wrestlers.
No, we don't, you don't have, it's a combined team.
They all come with accolades, everyone works.
It's a combined team, we have two brothers that are the lower weight classes and the third is at the highest weight class or among the highest weight classes. And they're just doing tremendously well and we haven't, you know, done, we haven't really been heard of from the States in quite a while, the team could be different, but it's a very exciting season for those teams. So congratulations to the athletes and their coaches, well, well done.
Great. Anybody else? All right, communications to the board, in addition to the ones on the calendar that we spoke about before, there was one on tenure process.